I'll call the order, the Augusta 28th, 2017 Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir, I will.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are sign up sheets in the back for a public hearing and for citizens' comment. If you'd like to speak tonight, please sign up. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is our motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Same.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item three is matters from city council members. Does anybody have anything they'd like to present tonight?
I would like to say something in brief. I would like to disverbalize what I've shared on social media in response to the recent events in Charlottesville and also just recent, in response to recent conversations I've had with community members, friends, family. I hope I'm correct in saying that I live in a city that doesn't tolerate inequality, racism, or hate. My hope is for community members to get to know each other, to get to know your neighbors who live on the other side of the railroad tracks. I attended an event this past Saturday here in Waynesboro entitled "Bridging the Communication Gap," hosted by a local resident, Shanda McGuffin, and, you know, a lot of great points were bought up during this event. And hopefully, this is, would be one of many conversations that will be had in this city. You know, my hope is we, as a city, will support diversity and inclusion and not hate, racism, and equality. Thank you.
I think you do have total support across the board up here from one end to the other.
I don't know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else have anything?
I would just ask, we've had a couple of meetings now where we've had some conversations and some questions about the Port Republic Road neighborhood and the Florence Avenue Bridge. And I was just asking, Mr. Hamp, if you could provide us kind of an update as to some of the work that's taking place in the Port Republic neighborhood and then the status of the Florence Avenue Bridge, just so.
Sure.
And lord knows, I think we all probably get that question, the status of the bridge on a pretty regular basis, too, so that'd be helpful.
Sure, and I'll take those perhaps in reverse order. So, in November of this year, the city would expect to receive seventy-five percent completed design drawings for the bridge and then for review. And then we would expect that around February of 2018, the drawings would be prepared for bid and the project would be put to bid for demolition and construction. Approval of that contract, so from February, March into the April timeframe, the contract would be reviewed and approved. We would expect that in April of 2018 to award and then by June of 2018, that demolition and construction would begin. And then with the construction estimated to last until March of 2019. I would suggest to you that that is a conservative anticipated timeline, that there might be opportunities in there depending on weather, market responsiveness, progress to make up some ground. But I think for the council's purpose and for purposes of the public, to expect a timeline that reflects what I've just shared. I think the key message is that, to affirm to the public that it is the city's intent, has always been the city's intent, that the bridge be repaired and replaced. So that's what we've been working toward with our vendor. In terms of Port Republic Road, it may also be helpful to know that since probably July of this year, when we started a new fiscal year, the Department of Public Works has been working to accomplish some sidewalk replacement and repair on Port Republic Road. And I think I would, I don't have a linear footage of how much work they've accomplished, but I would say that it's a fair amount. And anyone who travels in the neighborhood, either by foot or by car, ought to be able to see progress in that regard. And so we've heard for some time that the condition of the sidewalks needed attention and we agree. And fortunately, we've been able to find a resource and time and work plans to apply ourselves to that project and would expect to continue to see progress in that regard. Last year, you may recall that through our entitlement funds, through the Community Development Block grant, combined with general funds and some enterprise funds, the city spent about $20,000 in a small project that involved improvement to the water system, stormwater system. And we paved an alley in the area that was fairly important, especially to one business but also to other residents in the area. So that was a key investment. We've talked about recently that the allocation of those funds, while $180,000, doesn't allow, you know, enormously impactful work. So we try to be strategic and thoughtful about where need exists and how we apply those funds. And we were able to make some meaningful improvement in the neighborhood last year with those entitlement funds. I would note also that council may be aware that in the last two to three years, there have been some numerous and some significant property maintenance enforcement activity in the area. Some of those enforcements have simply dealt with high grass and what I would consider relatively minor property maintenance issues. But several of those enforcement actions have been significant in that buildings were secured, occupants were displaced, and significant progress was made to improve both occupant safety, public safety, and ensure that we're upholding a measure of required health and safety standards for living occupancy in the community. So I think sometimes those enforcement actions go unnoticed, but they are occurring, especially in that neighborhood. And then also, I would note, too, that the Department of Parks and Recreation over the last two or three years has been intentional about making sure that the Rosenwald Community Facility affords ample opportunity to the neighborhood for programming and events. And really, I would say that in doing that, has positioned Rosenwald as much as a neighborhood community center as a more general community center for Waynesboro. And they have, they host a mentoring program, which they do not conduct, but they do themselves, our staff, conduct two youth programs, one for pre-teens and one for teenagers. And then there are events throughout the year that are designed to, especially for residents in the Port Republic Road neighborhood to attend. And hopefully, that facility and the activity there becomes a greater part of the fabric of the neighborhood. And so I think Dwayne and his staff deserve credit for realizing that opportunity and then taking some specific action to meet that opportunity.
I think that's, that's great. I mean, that's certainly something that a year ago or so on the campaign trail that I heard a lot about, about the need for investment in the neighborhood and so on. And I think it's like so many things in life where individually, they kind of look minor, but when you combine the sum of all sort of things that, you know, the city's been able to accomplish over the last 12 months or plus, I think kind of speaks to the level of additional effort that the city's attempting to make to improve conditions over there. So thank you for that update.
Yes, sir. You have anything else?
I don't.
Anybody else? Mr. Mark?
Because next Monday falls, is my first Monday event for the month. Since it falls on Labor Day, I'll have that event for the public to come and ask questions, talk, give comments, if they'd like, on Tuesday. So it'll be the day after Labor Day next month. So come and join me at the Piner Bread, seven to eight, from eight to nine, I'm sorry, or at the library from seven to eight.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Mark, do you have something?
I just wanted to say I would hope that the citizens of Waynesboro could take real heart from the headlines in the Waynesboro paper on Saturday. It appears that Waynesboro is reasonably well-positioned to receive, hopefully, a substantial allocation from the settlement funds on the South River. And I think, too, that the city staff should be commended for the work that they've done in getting a whole series of projects or proposed projects that would, would meet the criteria of the settlement agreement and that want the citizens to know that although it may have seemed at times, from some of the things that were said, that the city wouldn't, city government wasn't sitting idle with, in its response to this settlement and what it might mean for Waynesboro. So hopefully, we're, we can all look with some optimism on seeing some things accomplished in the not-too-far distant future.
Thank you. Along that lines, I'd like to definitely acknowledge that Vice Mayor Short has spent a lot of time, time away from his family and nights and meetings and trips, being one of the head people for our council, going to these meetings and attending with staff and working with them. So I know you've, you've put a lot of time and effort into it and thank you, done an excellent job.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
For keeping us updated.
Yes, you've done an excellent job, thanks. Anything else? If not, then we'll move on. Item four is to hold a public hearing to receive comment and consider adopting a resolution amending an existing exclusive use access easement to which the city is a party. Mr. Judee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I was just telling Dwayne that this is one of those issues that will take a minute to explain, and once I explain it, you'll say, was that worth our time? This is actually an easement that's in the county, so we are not the jurisdiction here. We are a landholder. We're a party to the easement as a, as a property owner. And it's located, this is the city of Waynesboro here, it's located up here near the former city landfill, out on Gravel Ridge Road. So here's zoomed in, the city's over here, this is out in Augusta County, here's Gravel Ridge Road. We own a large parcel in Augusta County that was formerly used as a waste management facility. Behind that parcel, behind that facility are quite a few parcels that don't have a right-of-way access, which we would not allow and the county, I believe, would not allow now under their subdivision ordinances. But in order to get access, the property owners have to use an easement. We're party to that easement because it runs along the side of our property right here. The back house that uses the easement is actually not on the agreement. And like so many things, this came up when they tried to sell it. And so they're wanting to be added to the easement. The easement specifically exempts the city from any maintenance of the easement. All the other property owners maintain it. That's the sum of it. We just need to sign and allow this person to be added. Thanks.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll hereby open a public hearing.
We have one individual signed up to speak, Mr. Stephen Strohsneider, who is an agent for the applicant.
Good evening.
Will you give us your name and address?
Stephen Strohsneider, 129 North Wayne Avenue here in Waynesboro. And I'm the attorney here on behalf of Ms. Vi, who is sitting here in the fourth row. She's the property owner of the property in question, who's requesting the easement. And as was stated, the issue that the property is landlocked came up when Ms. Vi entered into a contract to sell the property, and this quickly became an issue, and she's not able to, to sell that property in its current condition. And so we've made this request for the city to join in this easement, which has been agreed to by the individual adjoining landowners. And as was stated, we have worded the easement so that it's clear that the individual landowners, such as Ms. Vi and her neighbors, they will be solely responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of what's known as Carolina Lane, to the exclusion of the city of Waynesboro, which will have no monetary requirements to contribute to that. And I would be happy, of course, to answer any questions that there may be about that easement.
Any questions from anyone?
No.
I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir.
And I'll hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item five is a presentation of the Waynesboro Public Library's annual report for fiscal year 2017 by Zaire Mahmood, library director. Zaire, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for giving this opportunity to present you with the library's FY17 annual budget. The mission of the library is to provide excellent services, quality services, resources, and lifelong learning opportunities through print, digital content, programs, and facilities to meet the ever-changing needs of our community we serve. In any typical business day, the library draws close to 600 people to the library. They come in from all walks of life, from socioeconomic backgrounds and all age groups. In FY17, we issued about 1,500 new cards. Total number of cardholders, active cardholders, the ones that at least used their cards one time, was over 13,000. Total visit to the library was 158,000. However, this number is about the folks who walk in from the main level. We cannot capture the data for the lower level. A significant number of people lose, use the lower level entrance to get into the building. And also, virtual visitors are not included in this figure because technology, technically we cannot capture that data. And I can assure you that that number could be a whole lot, because people use the online resources and also doing their circulation transactions such as renewals and, you know, checking the online catalog, that number's significantly high. We conducted a survey recently, and I asked patrons to, to share their comments and thought about the library, how the library impacts their life. And I selected these, a few sample of those comments, because I think they speak volumes. They talk about relevance of the library to the community and how they benefit from the library services. And I like the ones that, you know, says about homeschool mother, that the library provides an environment for the child to be socially involved with his peers, to have other environment other than home, to come and interact and explore the world of knowledge. Another one writes that the library makes a huge positive difference in my life, in our community, so I am grateful that it is here and have access to so many books. Another patron writes that, "I moved here in September 2015 and got a library card before I got a Virginia driver's license." That's important. "The library is one of my connections to the world. The internet, printer, copier, fax are all practical, useful, convenient, and affordable." The library is an equal access facility. Everyone can come into the library. It increases literacy, encourages literacy, it offers technology to those who may not be able to have access. And finally, it's a lovely place to meet in a quiet atmosphere. I don't know if that's quite an image, but I guess. The libraries are very friendly, patient, and helpful. They help me find books or sign out a room. They help me make copies. They know me and greet me with a smile. You could see on the, on the right side, people using different services, copier and circulation disc. It's a busy place. When you go during regular business hours, it's always busy. The parking lot, you could see, you know, the traffic, the volume of traffic in the library. These are some basic statistics for circulation and cause issues, audio visuals, and you could see the last item, genealogy searching, searches, 25,000 items. This is a database called ProQuest, which is basically a genealogy database, and the friends of the library pay for the subscription, but it's heavily used and it's very popular In this survey, we also kind of gauged the purpose of the visits. It looks like a majority of folks come in to check out books and audio visual materials. They check out books for information, research, or just recreational reading. Next to that comes the programs in DVDs. The audiobooks is another segment, quite used, especially those who are, go on travel in, on the, on the road, they, they check out audiobooks. Meeting rooms, and I'll touch on some of these when we discuss the topics relevant to these numbers. Our circulation per capita compares really high. The survey that was conducted among ten systems in Region Six, which is this area, and from Winchester down to Rockbridge, and on the other side, Jefferson Madison System, we are second to Stanton, and our per capita circulation is close to 15 items per capita. That's really high. Even though the statistics are from 2016, in 17, it's even better than that. Also, in this circulation per capita, doesn't include those who check out eBooks. And from the chart before, we saw that audio visuals and eBooks downloaded from two systems that we have subscribed to, is close to 8,000 items. So overall, we are doing good with, with books and audio visual materials and, you know, overall, what, another element that I need to mention is the fact that we also are part of the consortium Augusta County system. Stanton and Augusta County, we share our collections. So on a daily basis, about 10 or eight boxes go back and forth between our system and the two other systems. So that really benefits us in terms of sharing resources and cost of materials. This chart shows our total collection. We have close to 128,000 items in books and audio visual materials. I would say that the, the most important part in this pie is the genealogy and local history collection. It's close to 6,000 items. This is the most, you know, diverse collection, important collection, that brings in a lot of Virginians, even folks from out of state, those who are engaged in, in research of their family histories. So we have really enriched resources, and I think folks at the Library of Virginia know it. Folks who are in the system, they know it, and they constantly send patrons when they are dealing with, with, you know, researching their family history. Another group that comes into the library are folks who use computers to access internet. They access internet to, to search the, to search for, for jobs, for, for information, for filling out employment applications. And it's quite busy. We have about 20 workstations, and normally during busy hours, they're all occupied. We have logged in about 28,000 sessions in 2017, people who logged in 28,000 sessions. Again, that number doesn't include the ones that bring in their own devices. We have Wi-Fi through the building, throughout the building. And, you know, nowadays with, with distance education and online classes, a lot of people come in and bring in their own devices and tie in, into our Wi-Fi system. Our staff members provide one-on-one instruction in helping patrons to, to, to do their search or do employment applications, or when they need to set up an email account. In addition to that, our staff members also provide classes that, you know, they provide instruction on Microsoft applications or other technology-related issues. We continue to provide programs, educational, educational, helpful for, for, you know, consumer information type classes in the youth services department. Storytimes, which is a weekly program, continues to be popular. They bring families and preschoolers mostly to stories, songs, and crafts. The chat, the swing and sway is another one that keeps the kids moving around every week. And then the chat and play is something that provides kids a moment of socialization and so, interaction with each other in free, free plays. The program Mastermind and Junior Mastermind, that was really something that the Library of Virginia took initiative, they provided a lot of supplies, program supplies, and we have continued with that program. It provides STEAM kits for, for different age groups. So that's another really, really useful, beneficial program for, for young generation. The Gate Carded Program was another one that, I was talking to a member of the community earlier. What we normally do during a Gate Carded Program, we provide incentive, fine forgiveness incentive during month of September. So young kids, when they have fines because of unreturned materials, we generally forgive those fines, so that way they are encouraged to come back to the library and use our resources. Our staff members have been really Our staff members have been really, really reaching out to the school community. That's something that I didn't mention, but they do do a lot of programs with the school community in order to promote our resources and, you know, making the school population aware of the, some of the digital collection that's totally relevant to their everyday Special programs included the return of breakfast with Santa, which is really popular in the Easter egg hunt. We also kind of joined forces with Wayne Theater. And the extra special math, science, drastic encounter was a really big hit. It drew a lot of people and it was done at the Wayne Theater. Of course, the summer and winter reading programs, those are the big hits. Participation during those, especially summer reading programs, like over, close to 1,000 kids that participate in summer reading program. There was a new element added to the summer reading program this year. It was a big book bingo because the kids had to read, do a reading challenge and then mark off it on a bingo card. And they got, received incentives and prizes, things of that kind. So that was a major event. And we started with the Waynesboro Con, which is basically a comic-con event, magic show and face painting and, you know, games and things of that nature. So that was really popular. And the Flow Circus was another event, one man show who did a lot of circus performances and kids were really, really, you know, interacting with the guys. So that was really an interesting program for the young kids. This is a scene from the Mastermind. Kids are really, really interested in that program. They participate. In the adults department, they do programs as well. Last year, we had a couple of staff overturn and they didn't do programs the month of August and September. So our programs for adults started in October through June. They served about 1,400 folks during those programs. And the programs range from genealogy class for beginners to smart money series, Medicaid, Internet Security, home energy efficiency, crafts like creating jewelry, watercolors, ornaments. The music, midday music was, had two-part live music and also screening from Lincoln Center. That was really popular. It was live, you know, performances and was broadcasted at the library. The Irish music had a huge crowd. That was a big hit. Ongoing programs include knitters, color therapy, Friday night of the movies. And among the special programs, I will list the authors first. This was the third one that we conducted and we invite authors, mostly Virginia authors. We had 36 authors who got together and they were talking about their books and there were about 150 guests who came in and had conversation with authors. So it was a way of promoting our local authors as well as, you know, providing a chance for our, you know, residents to know the authors and look at their books. So that was amazing. And of course, the golf at the library tournament. Changing the library, just before we do that, on the right side, you see the eclipse viewing. That was fantastic. We set up tents outside and these folks on the grassy surfaces, but we received 1,000 eclipse glasses. We started distributing those glasses at 12 o'clock. By 2 o'clock, they were gone. So we had to, you know, set up tables outside and, you know, make up those pinhole viewers. But we are, at the same time, we did two programs in the multipurpose room, which was totally full to the capacity. So that was really, really, you know, interesting and folks, you know, were really looking forward to. Two days before the event, people were calling. Every call was about the glasses. When do you give out glasses? I forgot to bring my glasses, but I have one in my office too. But the next one was golf at the library. And this event took long to organize it. One staff took the lead on it. But changing the library into, you know, golf course was, you know, a new endeavor for us. But not only it served as a foundation for a great fundraiser, but at the same time, brought in huge crowd to the library and showed our potential for things that we could do in addition to just providing books and, you know, audio visuals. So that was a major achievement for us. And I guess if you recall, two weeks ago, there was an award presented for recognizing this program. The Directors Association provided or gave us an award, outstanding award for programs in the population of under 30,000. So this was a major achievement for us. And when comparing to the stats for programs per capita in attendance to programs per capita, it looks like we are right in the middle. I hope we can move it up to the, you know, top, but at this time, with the resources that we have, we are in the middle. Another thing that I like to mention is the fact that the library also serves as a community center. People come in, individuals and groups, to use the multipurpose room, from legislators to artists, to, you know, physicians, to businesses. There's not a whole lot of public space outside, you know. We get a lot of calls. We get calls that they like to have a meeting, businesses in particular. On average, every month, the multipurpose rooms are scheduled 48 times. It's quite heavy. From time to time, we have to even, you know, shuffle our programs, reschedule our programs to accommodate some of the meetings. And also the display areas, we have two, three areas for displays that, you know, authors and creators use to bring their artwork and, you know, showcase their talents. So we are, we are, you know, positioned really good in that regard, which has been to many other library systems. Space-wise, multipurpose rooms and display areas are really good, sufficient for our purpose. The only thing that I would mention is that some maintenance work is needed in regard to multipurpose rooms, that's something that we need to address. The library budget finally is kind of, when I compare it to four years ago, it's sort of on the same level. State and federal funding is on the same level. FY17 is slightly lower than FY16, and part of the reason is that the fact that FY16 included RFID technology investments. So, but we are overall on the same level. One thing that I like to mention is the fact that in addition to the state and federal money and local money, the friends have been really supportive. They have provided funding in support of programs and staff, you know, development and professional development. So I need to say that, you know, we are really, really appreciative of the fact that they are being supportive and they do everything they could to make us, you know, accomplish some of the tasks that we are delegated with. Finally, I'd like to thank also our staff members. Everything is done through their efforts. The fact that I have a group of dedicated, committed professionals who, you know, will do anything to make things go smoothly, successfully, and efficiently. And at the same time, like to thank volunteers, friends of the library, board members, that they, you know, committed to the fact that we need to do everything smoothly and professionally. And I'd like to thank you for your time and attention. I think I have one more.
Thank you, Zire.
Any questions? I'd be glad to respond.
I would just like to say that I've enjoyed using the conference room at the library for the first Monday every month for about two years, and I appreciate that and have citizens come in, we chat a little bit, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would just echo that. I mean, I think the, a little bit, we're going to talk a little bit about Sunset Park. We'll have a presentation, you know, about other sort of initiatives that the city's doing to great, great places. Because to build a great city, you gotta have great places. And the library is already just a wonderful asset for our community. And y'all just do such a great job up and down. And so really appreciate all the efforts.
Thanks.
It's just a great facility.
Thank you, Zire.
Thank you.
Item 6A is to consider approving the closure of portions of Main Street and Wayne Avenue downtown from 3:30 PM to 6:00 PM on October the 31st, as requested by the Kiwanis Club in order to hold the annual Trick and Treat Trail. Mr. Hamp.
So Mayor Allen and members of council, the street closures requested our Main Street from Church to the west, actually Church Street, Church Street on the western boundary of the closure, back east to Arch Avenue. And then Wayne is requested to be closed from Federal Street in the south to Lumos Plaza to the north. And the event will run from 3:30 until 6:30 PM and will also include amplified music.
Thank you. Were there any questions for members of council? If not, is there a motion to approve the request and closure of the streets?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5-0. Item 6 is to consider approving a request by the Department of Parks and Rec for authorization to serve beverage alcohol at Sunset Park in association with the fundraising event Harvest Dinner at Sunset on October the 7th. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen and members of council, maybe helpful to know that the event will be conducted in cooperation with local vendors. The event will include essentially a pig roast, side dishes, and local craft beer, live music. The idea is to have the dinner provided at sunset or around sunset. And then essentially, it's intended to serve as a fundraiser and an awareness raiser, elevator of the opportunity to establish a park facility at the top of the hill at the location of the former landfill. But the purpose, your consideration tonight is asked to authorize the consumption of beverage alcohol on city-owned property.
Anyone have any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the request?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Carries 5-0. Item 7A is to consider appointing a candidate to the Historical Commission for a four-year term ending August the 31st, 2021. Mr. Hamp.
Mr. Jake Boucher has presented his name and statement of interest in serving on the Historical Commission. If appointed, Mr. Boucher would serve a four-year term ending on August 31st of 2021.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Boucher?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman is the second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Item 7B is to consider appointing a candidate to the Ward D seat on the Parks and Rec Commission for a four-year term ending August the 31st, 2021. Mr. Hamp.
Ms. Elizabeth McGinnis presents her name and candidacy for appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Again, this will be a four-year term ending August 31st of 2021.
Any questions of Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion for this appointment?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Short. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Item 8A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a donation from the Waynesboro Lions Club in the amount of $15,000 to the general fund, the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance Division. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen and members of council, this is an appropriation ordinance appropriating a donation from the local Lions Club, who has worked collaboratively with our Department of Parks and Recreation. The funds will be used to upgrade and improve the picnic shelter in Ridgeview Park. Mr. Dwayne Jones is here to brief the council about the plans for the use of those funds.
Mayor, members of council, it is an exciting time that we get to partner with a great local community organization such as the Lions Club. Been working with Mr. Don Short, who unfortunately is not here this evening, and I wanted to thank him publicly for the support. It's not often we get such a large and generous donation, but I've worked with Mr. Short for the past six or seven months identifying different park projects that they may be interested in. And we settled on some improvements to the river shelter, which is the main shelter as you enter the park. And that's, our shelter reservations have really, in the last three to four years, those shelters are rented basically every weekend from spring until fall. That particular shelter is relatively small, and so with their donations, we're going to expand, put in some brick patios, also a fairly substantial seat wall that will also protect patrons from going out into the road, but also provide picnickers a place to sit in addition to the picnic tables there. So we're very, very excited for this partnership. It's going to be a major improvement, an improvement that we did not have budgeted for, and we're very thankful. And I know that there are some Lions Club members on council, and I know that there was some deliberation as opposed to different projects, and we're very, very excited to partner with the Lions Club on this particular project.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody have any questions?
Will be called the Lions Den, just what you're asking.
There will be an insignia on a new structure we're building there, so.
Well, great, thank you. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Ordinance is introduced this evening will be considered at the September 11th regular meeting of City Council. 8B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a donation from Ashley's Orthodontics in the amount of $1,000 to the school funds for the purchase of clothing, glasses, and other necessities for students. Mr. Hamp.
This generous donation, I think it's important to clarify, is to help meet the need amongst local students who come to school and have a need, whether it's a winter coat or glasses, as the information provides, or other necessities that are important to prepare them for learning. Ashley Orthodontics is an area business, and again, this is going to the school fund and it's a donation.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Is there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 6C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a state e-learning backpack program grant in the amount of $96,000 to the school funds for the purchase of laptop computers for Waynesboro High School. Mr. Hamp.
I don't think I need to add anything to that.
All right, any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 9 is communications and correspondence.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Number 10 is citizens' comment period.
Ms. Jeanne McCutcheon.
Ms. McCutcheon, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Yes. Good evening, I'm Jeanne McCutcheon, and I live at 1923's Main Street, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Port Republic Road History and Community Association, which we put together back 2014. I thank you very much for the cumulative things that you just mentioned that you did and got completed here in the city, in particularly in the Port Republic Road area. However, the park and recreation is not just for the Port Republic area, it's for the whole entire city. I thank you, it's long overdue, and there are still things that need to be done, and I want to speak about them, so you've cut my talk down a little bit. We still have some issues now on the Port Republic Road with the school bus. Besides school bus, there's another bus that comes and picks up children and senior centers, seniors, excuse me. Also, the deliveries that have to go to the park and recreation, which you have just said what you have done up there. There's an issue at this historic apartment, which is 260 Port Republic Road. They've been doing a lot of remodeling there. I think I went back and I found that they had a permit for some building or some work they're doing back in 2015. And they're doing some work on the staircase and things right now, and I checked and there is not a building permit. But when I checked with the assessors' office, it indicates that there are But when I checked with the assessors' office, it indicates that there are six apartments in that building with 12 bedrooms. And I think that there should be some off-street parking. I think I had a layout of that area, that they have space behind the building that goes back on Shallow Avenue, that could be for a parking of those residents to put their cars, which would take some pressure off the Port Republic Road area. One of our members' father was coming up there and he got stuck in the area, of course, coming down, you're in the right lane. Coming up, this young lady said she's not backing off. Remember I told you about possible road rage? She made that elderly man park all the way down until he could find a spot that there was not a car to move over to give her the right of way, because technically, she was right. That's an issue. And we see a lot of them people getting mad, you know, if we move out the way, then they take off and fly down the hill. Also, one of our members almost got hurt coming out, driving out of Beta Street, cars flying down Port Republic Road. I understand the police was out there this weekend and had to stop several other people. The big issue I have now, we had a good winter last year, but this year, we don't know what we're going to have, and we need to be prepared for the snow. With all those cars there and that narrow space a little below, McCutcheon's there with their cutout, we're going to have a problem with the snow pile. Have anybody thought about maybe some period of time of the day coordinated with the city that there would be off-street parking maybe three, four hours so that can be, they can be cleaned? Someone said there's, everybody don't have a parking space and everyone don't have a car that happen to live in some of those homes. They could park on the side street, be off, let's for example, say from 7:00 to 12:00 on whatever day the snow falls. But you need to alert people that that's going to happen, because that never has happened in that community before. That's my point, is can we look at some things we can do? I appreciate and understand it takes time to get the bridge fixed. My concern where I started here was when I heard Mr. Jim Shaw say, "Oh, we can just leave it closed." That's why I've been here talking about it. You can't just leave it closed, and I appreciate what you said tonight. I have one other question to ask you. I have several calls from people, and I didn't even know this. They asked me, "Why, Ms. McCutcheon, when you spoke at the City Council on the 14th, did they cut off your time on the repeated TV show?" I told them I couldn't tell them, so I'm here tonight to ask you. Did you tell them?
Ms. McCutcheon, once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you always have a lot to discuss with us, and we appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. Hamp.
Ms. Charlotte Wood.
Good evening.
Ms. Wood, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Yes, I am Charlotte Wood. I live at 346 Port Republic Road in Waynesboro, Virginia. I'm here this evening to speak in regards to the Uprising Outreach Center that is located at 212 Port Republic Road. This center has really not made a positive impact on our community. Various newspapers' articles say that technically, it's a church. And if it is, it is probably in violation of various city codes. It has never opened or operated as a church. I believe in February of this year, Ms. McCutcheon brought this to the attention of the City Council, asking that the Ward Seat Councilman Freeman to look into this matter. The center says it's a haven for the homeless, operating daily from 9:00 to 6:00. There is an influx of people overflowing to the alley, which is Abbey Place, onto the Greenway in the back of this building, and onto the condemned Terry Hotel. Recently, someone was seen living in the basement of the Terry Hotel, as well as in the Uprising Outreach Center, and I don't think that's what they're supposed to be doing. People are lingering well after 6:00 PM and can be seen sleeping and loitering in this area. This is an eyesore, not only for our community, but for the Shiloh Church attendees as well as the Greenway walkers. We're asking that this center be fully investigated to ensure that they are within the city codes and that we come up with, try to come up with some solutions for loitering and cleanup in that area. So it's kind of an eyesore coming across that track, so we're trying to get it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Anyone else? Mr. Hamp?
No, sir.
Mr. Hamp, maybe, I don't know if you'll have it concluded by our next council meeting, but sometime, we'd like to have an update on that issue there, because I know we've had several complaints, and we'd like to know where we stand at, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.